All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I will call into open session this meeting with the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on April 25th, 2019, beginning at 7:07 PM. I appreciate your patience in waiting for us, and the preview sounded wonderful. Can't wait for the full performance here. So, thank you for your patience. As is our custom, to start with an opening ceremony, please join Mr. Hogg in the Pledge Allegiance with us.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which we stand in, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good job, guys. Very good. And now, if you wouldn't mind, please silence cellphones and any electronic devices that you have to avoid disruptions to those around you. And if you would also now please join me in a moment of silence. Get my notes in order here. So first, as Ms. Foster makes her way over here to the mic, we have, as you all know, some wonderful entertainment here at the beginning of our agenda with program and presentation. So please.
We do, and I'm not going to try to break up this phenomenal group in front of me. So I will speak from over here tonight and just say, Dr. Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, and everyone who's lucky enough to be here tonight because of our special guests. Hi, everyone. Hi. What school are y'all from?
Cory.
I couldn't hear you on the other end.
Cory.
Cory. That's right. We are so delighted that we have the Cory Academy of Fine Arts and Dual Language, where these students receive instruction in both English and Spanish, as well as learning all your fine arts, like music, and dance, and art. The Cory community wants to give a special appreciation to the Board of Trustees for your support of this innovative and forward-thinking school design. Felipe Rosales is here with us. He's in his second year as the music specialist at Cory. He directed his older singers this past September at the groundbreaking for the Fine Arts Center, and tonight, he's leading his albo's first graders in three songs. So tonight, you're going to be entertained with Pon Pon Pon, a game song from Mexico. Excited about that one. El Coro Cal, an Argentinian song about the beloved snail, and Mi Cuerpo hace musica. Did I get that right, y'all? Okay, good, good. Good. I feel they would've let me know if I didn't. It's a folk song from Puerto Rico that talks about the music we have in our hands, our feet, our voice, and our cuerpo, which means "our body," right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So everyone, put your hands together. Let's give a great big AIST welcome to our Cory side.
(Applause) (Music) 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 (Music)
Wow, thank you, kids. That was wonderful. One of the things I enjoyed the most was watching some siblings and adults out in the audience wiggling, just like you guys were. That's pretty cool. Mr. Rosales, thank you for all you do, and great skills on the ukulele there. Love it.
(Laughter)
Yeah, I think so. Quite a bit. Thank you so much for sharing your talents musically and linguistically. Thank you very much. Yeah. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that a couple of us were at the Cory Night at Levitt last week, and it was fabulous. And of course, the little ones just steal the show every time they get up on that stage. But congratulations to all of the kids at Cory for a wonderful program, and thank you all, instructors and administrators.
We'll give them just a couple, a minute to filter out. Think we should probably just call meeting adjourned. What do you think? Of course, of course. So next up on our agenda is the Student of the Month for our Month of April. This month, we have the pleasure of learning about our Student of the Month from Seguin High School. And to do the introductions is Principal Ray Borden, who will also be entertaining for us, being inspired by the Cory kids. There we go. Very good, very good.
Good evening, President Reich, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. As you guys know, it is always hard to pick just one student to represent the best of what Seguin represents. However, every year, as the APs, counselors, and teachers get together around a table and have a discussion about whom we want to bestow this honor upon, inevitably, when the right student's name is uttered, the room erupts in this universal "Yes." And this year was no different. When Meyer Tadonio's name was mentioned, the search for that star student unanimously ended unanimously. The first thing anyone will notice about Meyer is her big, bright smile. You're supposed to be smiling. I had it on paper. Cue turn, she smiled. But she does have a beautiful smile, but she's so much more than just a pretty smile. She is the embodiment of everything we hope our students want to be at Seguin. She is pleasant and upbeat with everyone, peers, teachers, and staff. She is academically focused student that is involved in spreading a positive culture. She is a member of National Honor Society, Seguin Drama Club, a member of the International Thespian Society, soccer player, and participates in many other activities. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M to become a veterinarian. Meyer's teachers describe her as well-mannered, reliable, amazingly talented, and a joy to have in class with an unmatchable work ethic. Mr. Dickerson, her physics teacher, says this about Meyer. "Physics isn't an easy subject, but when Meyer encounters a problem that seems unsolvable, she never gives up. She knows that she is smart enough to find a solution to whatever physics or life throws her away, and she does it with an amazingly positive attitude." Mr. Dickerson goes on to say, "Meyer is an inspiration to her peers and inspires me to be a better teacher every day because she always looks on the bright side of life." Meyer Tadonio.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there any words that you have for us or anybody you'd like to introduce?
Yes.
Please.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Cavassos, Dr. Reich, and Mr. Borden for nominating me and getting me here today. A few years ago, in eighth grade, I got the Panther of the Year Award, where they choose one student out of a whole Ausley, and I didn't think I would be here because I saw on the website, "Oh, that's cool, Student of the Month. I'm never going to get that. That's cool." And here I am, and I look at the past Student of the Month, and I'm like, "Wow, how did that happen?" So I think that's really cool. And I know that a lot of other students would start their speech off with, "Wow, I'd really like to thank my parents." So I'm just going to save that for the end. First, I'd like to thank my teachers, and like Mr. Borden had mentioned before, I'd like to thank Mr. D., well, Mr. Dickerson. He was my physics teacher, and I stayed with him every day after school. And I'd like to think he's the old man version of myself because he's just so energetic. And I know if I'd have a bad day, I could just see him, and just looking at him, I was healed. And I'd like to thank Mr. Prescott. I had him last year. He actually really helped me with theater rather than US history, but it's all good. And I wanted to thank Dr. Frazier. He is my French teacher for the past four years, and I'm not taking French because I love it, because I want to go to France. I'm taking it specifically because of him. I really like him, and I enjoy being in his class. He is so funny, and he encourages every student to be better and to go to college and do great things. So if you're looking for, you know, to just hand out raises, I think. I think those are a lot of people that you should consider. And also Ms. Stevens, who is my AP Bio teacher. I had her freshman year and senior year, and she is like my best friend at school. So she's awesome. So again, you know, if you're just, you know, looking like, "Hey, you want some?" Those are some really good people to go to. So last, I'd like to thank my parents because I know that that is something that everybody says, but I think it's more true for me than anybody else, specifically because last year, when I was in four AP classes and theater and soccer and staying up till 2:00 AM finishing homework, they stayed up with me. And normally, a lot of parents would be like, "Oh, yeah, you got this. We're going to go to bed, so good luck." But me, they stayed up with me through 2:00 to 2:00 AM. They lost sleep when they had to go to work early. My dad had to be at work before I ever had to be at school, so I think for that, they're like true troopers. If anything, they should get the award instead of me. My mom works at Beckham Elementary, so I think part of my growing up and becoming the student I am today was because, not only because she's a teacher, but because I had all these role models to look up to. My dad's a police officer, so I've got like the whole technical in there. And I have a great brother who is in Nebraska right now, about to graduate college and going to law school. So I'd like to think that I have a lot of role models in my life that have really inspired me to do better because I don't work hard for anything. If anything, I just work hard to prove to my parents that they did a good job, and I just, instead of hearing, "Oh, good job," I love hearing, "We're so proud of you." So I think that's my main goal right now.
Wow.
Wow.
You are certainly a positive, uplifting, impressive individual.
Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, I can see why you were chosen as Student of the Month from Seguin. And on a related note, I'm sure Mr. Borden will pay you on the whole teacher raise thing. So that's the other reason apparently you're here.
I'm getting partially of that, so it's fine.
Now, I...
I'm going to need it.
In all seriousness, to have you provide testimony of the love and the care, the passion that great teachers have, and their impact that they've had on you, that speaks volumes. For you as an individual, for our district, for the great quality leaders and teachers that we have here in this district, and that I can speak on behalf of the board, that makes us all very happy, very proud to hear that, and really appreciate you being able to articulate that as first and foremost in your priorities that you laid out. So we are certainly excited. You have a very bright future ahead of you. I look forward to the day when you will be coming back to Arlington to open up your veterinary practice.
Yes, that's a dream.
That's great. That's great. We'll be happy to have you. So before you step away, Dr. Cavassos and I would like to come down. We have a couple of items to share with you.
Thank you.
So Meyer, this is a pin that you see I'm wearing, Dr. Cavassos is wearing, Mr. Hogg never wears his. Most trustees wear them. These are our pins. We only bestow these seriously upon people that are worthy of great tasks, great achievements, and it's a showing of great respect and admiration that we have. And so I'd like to give that to you.
Thank you.
You can display that proudly on a shelf in a shadow box, on any outfit you wear every day throughout ISD days here, A&amp;M, back home. But thank you very much for being a tremendous, tremendous individual and role model to others. As you mentioned, role model, you're a great role model.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you so much for being such a demonstration of excellence in our school district, but not only excellence, but also compassion and love that you have for the adults, your parents, the teachers, your principal as well. And so I thank you for that, as you are an example for many students. So this is another token of our appreciation for you and continued success to you.
Thank you.
If you would mind, we'll take a couple of pictures, and then you can see it on the website, and it'll be you.
Okay.
Put the thing forward. By the way, there we go. One more. Dad, did you need another one, or you got yours?
I got it.
Good.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm going to give you a hug. You're trying to keep it together, aren't you? You're in every reason to please.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
For you. Great job. Great job. All right. Are you ready to follow that? So next on our agenda, we come to appointments, and we have one item for the Assistant Superintendent of Research and Accountability, Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Reich. I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Superintendent of Research and Accountability.
I'll entertain a motion. Wow, Mr. Hogg throwing shade. Ms. Walton?
I move that we approve the appointment as recommended by our superintendent.
I second.
All right. We do have a motion by Ms. Walton and a second by Mrs. Mays to accept the recommendation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. Mr. Hibbs is away on business this evening. Whew, congratulations, Dr. Barlow.
Dr. Reich, it's my pleasure to present our new Assistant Superintendent for Research and Accountability, Dr. Kevin Barlow. Kevin attended the University of Mary Harden Baylor for Bachelor of Science in Applied Mathematics, Charlton State University for Master of Science in Mathematics, Texas A&amp;M University for PhD, and I paused just for them, for PhD in Educational Psychology, Emphasis in Research, Measurement, and Statistics. Most recently, he's been our Executive Director of Research and Accountability, has been an Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness at the University of Houston, has been an Executive Director of Research and Accountability in Clear Creek ISD, Director of Accountability in Georgetown ISD, Math Teacher Ambassador, and High School Math Teacher in Lampas ISD. Dr. Barlow, congratulations, and anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. Got a few notes here, just to get through this. I stood at this very podium 1,652 days ago to accept what I believed at the time to be the best job in the world, the Executive Director at that time as Accountability Planning and Testing. Since that time, what I believed turned into fact. It was the best job in the world until, of course, tonight with this new adventure. I love this district, its senior leadership, board members, administrators, teachers, parents, and students. I feel honored to have served them for the last four and a half years. We have accomplished so much over that time, but we have so much more to do. And of course, we couldn't have accomplished so much without the leadership of Dr. Cavassos, and Dr. Wertz, and my wonderful staff. I believe three of them are here tonight, my secretary, Jody Peoples, two of my directors, Dr. Peggy Porterfield and Dr. Natalie Lopez. I hope all of you know how much I truly appreciate you. Lastly, I want to thank my lovely wife, Glenna, who's here tonight. She couldn't be here four and a half years ago, so I'm very pleased that she was able to be here tonight. And my two kids, David and Lauren, for all of their love and support over the last many years. I love all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We are so happy for you, Dr. Barlow, and so appreciative of the contributions and the value that you bring to Arlington ISD. Your attention to detail from a research and accountability standpoint is really second to none. And, you know, we may joke sometimes here on the dais when you're presenting some things that are in so much technical detail that's above our head, and we are just so pleased that you have that aptitude and the ability and the passion and the desire to dig even deeper so that our students are much better prepared and represented, not just internally here with the district, but with what you have done in advocacy and communication with TEA and the state legislature. And with this role transitioning to even a larger depth and breadth of looking at the statistics and the analytics of our district to really hone in on what is maximally, or I should say optimally, for the highest performance for not just our students, which is first and foremost, but for every facet within the district. And that is phenomenal. I truly believe that there is not a district in the state, if not the nation, that has this type of focus that you're raising the bar for in the district. So we're very proud and really look forward to many more detailed presentations to come with more topics. As is our custom, if you would please follow Mr. Cale out to the lobby so we can have a brief reception to welcome you. If the audience would not mind and indulge the board to please allow us to go first so that we can come back in and continue on with business. Yes, Meyer, you, please. We want to have a receiving line for you, so if you could follow them out as well, if you like. If you don't, that's okay, but you're more than welcome to. And so with that, it is 7:33. We will come back at 7:45. Thank you. The time is 7:45. We're going to resume business. Next on our agenda, there's a public hearing. We do not have a public hearing. Open forum for agenda items follows that. We don't have any cards for the open forum for agenda items, so we will move on to the next, which are action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reich, and this is an action item to consider approving the resolution as discussed earlier.
All right, yes, so under... Yes, so under this action item A, I would be willing to entertain a motion from trustees. Mrs. Fowler.
I move to approve the resolution as attached and authorize the Board President to sign the resolution authorizing the superintendent to negotiate and purchase of land described from Sengud Kramer.
Very good. Is there a second? There we go. Ms. Walton?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mrs. Fowler, a second by Ms. Walton. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, please vote. Very good. Motion passes for that authorization. We will continue on. Item B is the resolution for the tract of land. Try to put this down a little bit towards the bottom there at the southwest corner, locally known as 101 West Arbrook, or the southwest corner of the intersection of West Arbrook Boulevard and Center Street in Arlington. This is a consideration of resolution. Mr. Hog?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Rice. I move to approve the resolution as attached to item B and authorize the Board President to sign the resolution authorizing the superintendent as our designated to negotiate and sell the real property as described therein.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Fowler?
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Hog, second by Mrs. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries. All right. Moving on towards consent, are there any items trustees wish to be withdrawn from the consent agenda at this time? All right. Well, then we will move on to, to consent. And I would ask Ms. Powell to please come forth to identify bids, et cetera, that we have this evening on consent.
Thank you. Dr. Rice, board members, Dr. Kavassos, good evening. We have for your consideration this evening donations totaling $67,844, which brings our year-to-date total to $948,116. We also have five bids on the agenda this evening, and in all cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Is there a motion to accept consent? Sorry. That's my fault here. Ms. Walton?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Mays?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Walton and a second by Mrs. Mays to approve consent. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, please vote. Consent passes. Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Powell. All right. Moving on, we have a discussion item A, progress report for the Board of Trustees, continuing education credit. So this is a, a legal process that, that we have to enclose, or disclose, I should say, to, to the public to make sure that trustees are all in line in meeting or exceeding the state-required continuing education credit and training that we are to receive. And at this time, I do have a report. I won't go through all of the details, but that all, all trustees have met and actually have exceeded the minimum continuing education credit and training requirements at, at this point in time. So we are in full compliance. Additionally, all of you have received earlier the framework for school board development, which is also part of our annual disclosure and process. So we will move on then to the next item, which is the Gifted and Talented Program Update. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Rice. And this evening, we'd like to share with you an update on our Gifted and Talented Program. As the board is aware, we've been on a journey with this program and made major changes and improvements throughout the past couple of years. And so we thought it'd be appropriate to provide an update on our progress and take a, a look into the future of, of our direction here with the Gifted and Talented Program. So this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wertz.
Good evening, President Rice, Dr. Kavassos, members of the board. I'm excited to be here this evening to share with you an update on the progress and work that the team has done on the Gifted and Talented Program here in Arlington ISD. And I wanted to start off first by recognizing some of the key players that have made a significant impact in this program. And I want to start with Amy Gresham. Amy Gresham is our coordinator for Gifted and Talented in our Advanced Academic Services area. And she has been really the brainchild and the strong implementer of this program across our district. And so many of the things that you're going to hear me talk about tonight, she has been on the forefront line, leading that work. And so I just want to express my sincere appreciation to her. And she's been working under the leadership of Dr. Horton and Dr. Karen Zeskey from the Advanced Academics Department and then Transformational Learning. And I am very grateful to them for their leadership as well and the guidance that they provided that team as they've implemented this program for our students. As you know, our vision in Arlington that we've adopted as a school district is that all of our students will have an opportunity to go to a school district that is a premier school district and a leader in education. And in order to do that, we believe that our students have an opportunity to have 100% of them be exceptionally prepared for college, career, and citizenship. And so this is a good example of where that equity goal of 100% comes into play in that we're trying to address the needs of our most advanced learners, those who are gifted, who are often not necessarily paid close attention to because their performance is already so stellar in many ways. And so tonight, I want to, I'm eager to share with you some of the enhancements that we've made to ensure that all of our students' needs are being met, even those that are gifted and talented. In the strategic plan that was adopted, there were four performance objective categories. And the, the one that's specifically connected to this conversation tonight is college readiness. And the strategy was 2.3, which is redesigning our K-12 Gifted and Talented Program. So what is gifted and talented? Gifted and talented, its program is specifically for students who perform at or show the potential for, for performing at a remarkably high level. So these are students who exhibit high performance capabilities. They could be artistic. They could be exceptionally creative. They might be exceptionally intellectual. It could be any of those three areas. They also possess an increased capacity for leadership or may excel very specifically in a, in a content area or an academic field. And so when we think about a gifted child, this is the definition that we kind of lean into when we're trying to identify students. Texas has a goal to ensure that students who participate in the program acquire and demonstrate skills in areas such as thinking, able to communicate, conduct research, that they are able to participate in their own learning in a self-directed way, and that they develop innovative projects and have opportunities to perform in sophisticated performances that exhibit these characteristics that I was just talking about, specifically their creativity, their individuality, and things that are connected to areas outside of the classroom. I thought it would be interesting to share with you what some of the rates were in terms of statistics at the national and state level and where we compare in Arlington. So typically, across the state, there are about 6.7% of the identified population, a little over 3.3 million, who are identified as gifted and talented. And in Arlington, in the state of Texas, the, the rate is about 7.9%. And usually, when you're thinking about gifted and talented, you, you usually hover around this area between 6 and 8%. You're looking for your most exceptional students. In Arlington, I, we have made a lot of progress in this area. So if you're looking at the data in front of you, in 2015, those were the number of identified students in grades kinder through sixth grade who are receiving, well, gifted and talented services as identified students. And then if you jump to the 2019 column, which is post-implementation of all of these changes, you can see the number of students who are actually identified in our, our area. So right now in Arlington, we have about 10.4% identified, which is a little more than you usually find, which is a question we're also asking ourselves, how do we navigate that? But this is about a 66% increase in total number of students that are being identified. And one of the ones I just want to point out and highlight is specifically in kindergarten. And you're going to hear me talk tonight about specific strategies that have been put in place to identify kids at a very early age. In 2015, we didn't have one kindergartner that was identified in GT. Today, 244 sitting in the kindergarten classrooms who are gifted, or at least, I think this was actually April, so we pulled this data very recently. The way I've kind of structured or framed the conversation this evening is around the specific areas that are part of the, the state's Gifted and Talented Plan, which is housed at the Texas Education Agency. And we're going to be looking at five areas. Student Assessment, Service Design, Curriculum and Instruction, Professional Development, and then the Family Community Involvement area. In the current plan, which is about to be changed in June, there were three ways in which you could be scored as a district. And it was, there wasn't a, a rating that we received, but you received, we have rubrics that you can compare and see where you fall in terms of implementation. And we were in compliance in most of them. And in some areas, I would say that would be a really generous way of putting it. And so we recognized that we wanted to meet our students' needs. We were going to have to make some changes. And our goal when we were at the onset of this plan was to land in the recognized or the recommended exemplary columns for our students at, at a minimum. And so tonight, I can, I can say that in all areas, we are at, at a minimum at the recommended and in some, in some areas at the exemplary area. The way that we would calibrate our program design or any of the Gifted and Talented services against the new rubric, I'll talk about that. They change the categories, but we are well within the, beyond the compliance area, which is for us a very strong place to be for the elementary ranks. So what were those opportunities that we were trying to address? We had inconsistent identification processes across the district, which is why you saw the numbers the way that they were. We lacked some guidelines in the district for how to group and cluster GT students so they had opportunities to interface with other students who were like them. We had late identification in elementary, and we gave an exam, we gave a screener called the COGAT, which focuses on verbal and nonverbal academic giftedness, so to speak. Late, it was given in third and sixth grade, which is, which is a challenge when you're trying to identify young gifted learners. The services that we provided were actually through differentiation that was expected to be given to, by the teachers in the classroom. So in our old model, we had almost every teacher getting their GT hours, which was not very efficient and not, not necessary. So we made some adjustments to that, which I'll talk about. We had no real strong enhancements to, in our curriculum that would really address the differentiated needs of the gifted learner. And our communication with parents was pretty inconsistent around this program. So these were all of the bullets that we were trying to address in terms of implementing the new updated changes. In 2019 now, I can proudly say, due to the work of some exceptional people, we do have a specific identification process and a timeline. We have established guidelines, which I'll share with you this evening, about how we cluster students. We have universal screening now that happens in K-2 and 4 so that we're able to identify students at a young and early age and meet their needs as they matriculate through the grade levels. We have a menu of instruments that we, that we can use to identify students in our assessment process that include nonverbal opportunities for students who are not necessarily readers or writers, but have giftedness. That's intuitive that we can identify. We've defined what our services are for elementary. We have a dedicated GT lead teacher now at every campus that helps in the implementation of the program. And we've trained our teachers who implement GT services on the new curriculum enhancements, which I'm going to share with you this evening. So the new GT state plan is, will go into effect in June of this year for the 2019-20 school year. And it has all the same components that I talked about before in terms of those five areas, but they've added one around fidelity of services. And this one specifically speaks to the fact that school districts comply with these, what they call accountability standards, and they, that we're charged with monitoring the effectiveness and the quality of those services that we're providing to GT students. In the new plan, this is a new item to kind of pay attention to, as I was saying, along with the other five areas along the way. So the first one I wanted to mention is, the first component is student assessment. So in, in our, in our previous years, you can see here is a, a timeline from all the way back from 2011, '12 to 2015, when we started this process. You can get a sense of how we were identifying students over the years. You can kind of get a sense, we, we were pretty much staying consistent across the district from year to year to year about what levels of student, which students and which grade level bands we are finding GT students. One thing you're going to notice on this plan is there's a huge, like if you go back to 2011, 2012, the number of students that were identified in the primary grades was very small, and that number would grow and grow and grow as kids got older. And there's lots of reasons why you could think why that's happening. Part of it is the fact that our screeners that we were actually using to identify students were also at later points in their educational career. And this persisted over multiple years, and our goal was to change this trajectory. And the system that, the system that we used to use to identify students was pretty basic. We had identified a pool of students. So in kindergarten is, for example, we, the teachers have a checklist to look for the characteristics or qualities of a gifted student. That information was also combined with what we, what's called the N-N-A-T or the Naglary Nonverbal Abilities Test, which is an assessment that allows us to identify giftedness in a student who is not necessarily a reader or writer. Students would, would participate in activities which create a portfolio, and then a placement committee would, would go through the process of identifying students. The problem was is these structures were inconsistently being implemented across the district, and they weren't necessarily having the structure that we were looking for, which yielded the kind of results that we had. In the new system, our goal was to do two things, identify earlier and make sure that we did this so that students didn't fall into a pattern of low performance because they weren't having their needs met at a, a young age. And that sometimes, when, if you misidentifying students at a real young age, what happens is in their own behaviors, they start to hide their abilities from their peer groups because they want to feel accepted. And so our goal is to identify them early and allow them to interface with other kids that are also like them so they can be, they can recognize their own self-worth and their individuality and the, and the contributions that they actually bring to their, the educational environment. So this is our universal identification cycle now. We do it at K-2 and 4. We provide the Naglary to all students in kindergarten, in, in kindergarten in the spring. We do it in second grade through ITBS, which is a more academic kind of assessment. And then the COGAT we offer in fourth grade. So the reason why they're scattered across multiple grade levels is for two reasons. One, if we miss you in kinder, we'll have an opportunity to catch you in second grade. When you scatter it out, it doesn't rely on the fact that someone's nominating you for, for a gifted program. We're going to screen for you. And so because we have such high mobility, we have kids coming in and out of our system. If you don't, if you're with us in, in first grade and then you leave and you come back, we, we catch you again in some ways in terms of this net of universal screening. So our process is a, a little bit different. I, I won't belabor all of them because they kind of get repetitive over the multiple grade levels, but I'll, I'll highlight one. Kindergarten, for example, though each student in kindergarten in the first semester is provided an opportunity to engage in five kindergarten learning experiences, which are actually designed to allow students to screen, allows us to screen for their giftedness through nonverbal, or through nonverbal kind of ways. So for example, some of the activities might be, they receive a bunch of shapes and they're asked to help us understand what the shapes are. Actually, not nonverbal. They do ta, they are verbal as part of this, sorry. They also consider problem solving in terms of their shapes. Or can they create something new that sits outside of the classroom that would benefit humanity? We might give them what you would call them, like a shape that looks like a, a blob of spilt milk, and we might ask them to come up with sentence stems for that. So they, they participate in a variety of experiences. There are five of them. And those are evaluated and placed in a portfolio, and those portfolios are screened. And based on the outcomes of those portfolios, we take the top 20% of those student portfolios and then we provide them the N-N-A-T, which is the Naglary, which is the nonverbal assessment. And we screen for that. And so we take their assessment, we take their portfolios. All of that work is evaluated by a team of people who are on a committee, and then students are actually identified and placed in their program. For first grade, it's, it's a little bit different in that there's not this emphasis on all these five experiences in a portfolio on the front of the year as we, we screen again using the ITBS, which is the Iowa Test of Basic Skills. We provide that to all of our second grade students. And so we look at quantitative and qualitative criteria to identify a student in second grade. They go through a similar process of screening through a committee, and then the committee actually will place them. In the upper grades, in 3 through 6, we use the COGAT. And the COGAT assessment is administered to the fourth grade students. And it, what we do is we take the top 15% scores of the COGAT, and we look at those, those students for giftedness through the, the committee process. And I think the thing to recognize around these, and I wanted to point out, is the reason we're looking again at the top 20 and the top 15% is because you're even narrowing it down to, to your highly gifted students or your students who are at the top percentiles of what their normal cohort or, or age groups would typically be. So again, this is the impact we've had, and this was a 66%, 6% increase. So we have many more students now that we know are gifted, who are actually receiving services that were not in the past. So our service design is a little bit different. So this is what our basic service design used to look like. As I was saying, students would go to the general ed classroom, and teachers in the general ed classroom would be responsible for providing a differentiated service to their students, along with students who need intervention and students who are general ed, not needing interventions in the classroom. When they would go to secondary, they could participate in pre-AP, AP, and IB coursework. But there was no real specific resources for teachers on how to really differentiate for these gifted students. In our new service design, it's a little bit different. So I mentioned earlier about the universal screening process that we have for grades in 2, 4, and 6. And now we cluster group our students. We put, we provide push-in support by the lead GT lead teacher so they can go into classrooms where the students are at to support the general ed teacher in providing services to the gifted students. And also, every GT lead teacher has the opportunity to pull the students to do specific activities and work on specific projects and curricula with gifted students during what we call enrichment, intervention enrichment time, so that their needs are being met during that, that time as well. In grades 1 through 4, they receive, the students who are in grades 1 through 4 who receive pull-out services do so two hours a week. So they're basically pulled out twice a week and in some cases, three times. The reason why kindergarten isn't there is because we, our goal is to The reason why kindergarten isn't there is because we, our goal is to identify students and have them identified by March. So all GT, all kindergarten teachers receive their GT hours, because they're looking to identify students at that age group. As the kids matriculate to first and second grade and on, they are placed in classrooms with the teacher who is GT, has their thirty, their 30 GT hours, so that they can be differentiated in those groups. And I'll talk to you in a minute about what cluster grouping looks like and how we, what parameters we have around that. In grades two through six now, we have curriculum updates around the implementation of literature circles. We are also piloting some enrichment in mathematics. In advanced math this year, we're piloting at 10 schools in grades three through four, and we'll be rolling it out across the district in grades three through four next year. And then we will be moving to the grades five and six pilot, and then in 2021, it'll be district-wide. Grades three through six have Ranzilli Learning, which I'll mention in a bit about what that is. And then, of course, there are increased opportunities for teachers to receive training in a variety of formats, so they can differentiate for their learner's needs. So cluster grouping, what is it? It's, it's pretty much exactly what it says. You find your identified GT students, and you place them in a clustered group within the classroom, so they have an opportunity to work in a mixed ability classroom. So it's not a self-contained classroom where everyone in the classroom is gifted. They have an opportunity to interface with other students who are like them in terms of their identified giftedness, and also work with students who are not necessarily identified as gifted. This is actually beneficial for a couple of reasons. One, it ensures the social, the, the social acclimation of students who are gifted into a general ed environment, but also helps to enrich the environment for other students. And those that aren't necessarily gifted but are advanced, they also benefit from this experience. The difference between cluster grouping and ability grouping is, is exactly what I described, which is one is mixed and one pretty much isn't. In a, in an ability group, we would focus on really trying to make sure the entire class looked that way, and that's not what our target actually is. You might ask, why do we spend our time clustering gifted students? It is a best practice, and there's rationale behind it, and it is actually addressed in the Texas Administrative Code. And there's research around it. There, it allows for full-time students to engage with other high-achieving students. It allows for flexible instructional grouping amongst academic areas. And you're going to find that as you look into best practice for gifted students, you're going to find cluster grouping is a very common practice across the United States. Our expectation in Arlington is that if you have gifted students, that you gift them, we, we cluster them in seven to 10 kids-at-a-time group size. And that includes programming. So if we have bilingual students, and we have up to seven bilingual students, say, for example, in the first grade classroom, all seven of those in that school we placed in the same classroom. If the group, if the identified number is more than 10, then we ask the school to split those into two even groups and place them into their, into a classroom in smaller clustered groups. But both of the teachers that they would go to would be trained in gifted learning. For students who are twice exceptional, so students who have been identified for more than one program, are also included in the cluster arrangement. And the daily instruction in the core classroom is provided by that, that teacher. We also have this lead teacher, and I wanted to spend a minute just kind of identifying a little bit about what this role was, because the, we invested a lot of time in it and also finances behind it. So this gifted teacher plays a really significant role, this GT lead teacher, in, in implementing the program at the school. They provide the pull-outs, like I mentioned earlier. They provide the push-in services and as well instructional support to teachers by participating in the PLCs and the planning, the enrichment activity designed for the kids in the classroom. They also facilitate all of the identification and screening process that takes place at each of their campuses. They participate in leading the extracurricular support for students at the schools, and they are responsible for helping to communicate about the gifted program at the schools with parents in the community. So their role is pretty significant. When we initially started, we split them between multiple campuses. And as the program grew and developed and became more robust with more and more students, there became the need where we had to have one at every campus, just for capacity reasons. And so now, at every school, there is one. In secondary, our GT services are, are very similar to what they were in the past. And if we were being completely candid, that is our next stop in terms of where we need to do our work. Right now, students who were identified as gifted participate in pre-AP and AP classes. They can take Algebra I in eighth grade. There are other high school courses that you can actually take in eighth grade, and we do help accelerate their learning through dual program, dual credit programs in high school. But that is an area that we acknowledge is our area of work. And so when I get to the next steps at the end, you're going to hear me talk a little about that. Our instructional delivery are exactly what I've been talking about before in terms of how it was before. It was inconsistent in terms of the fidelity at which it was implemented across the district. In K through two, the way that it was done is the standardized report card labeled a four as being above grade level, and that's pretty much where kids would sit. There really wasn't necessarily any differentiated instruction. So now, in K through two, we have these enhancements. So I mentioned a little bit about what Kengor learning experiences were, these open-ended activities for students. Additional lessons were designed around this universal concept, so that students can have access to these kinds of experiences. And they're, they were, at, at the onset of my presentation, I talked about how we use them for screening in kindergarten. Now, these enhancements in terms of these experiences are actually provided to gifted students across the grade level bands in K through six. We also offer Ranzilli Learning in grades three through six at each of the schools. This is basically an interest-based kind of exploratory software. So what happens is that kids will take an inventory, which will tap into what their, their interests are and their creativity and learning style. And then artificial intelligence is leveraged to kind of generate the most appropriate activities for, for students, so they can be engaged. These activities are inquiry-based, they're differentiated for each of the individual students. Teachers also have the flexibility to decide if they want to have a specific project assigned to the students to work on, or whether they want to identify the standard. But there's a variety of opportunities for kids to have different kinds of projects or experiences with this program. It used to be called GoQuest, and so when you heard me talk before, you probably heard me talk about the pilot of GoQuest. They, it's rebranded as Ranzilli. Literacy circles are, and advanced mathematics are, are in place. And literature circles are basically student-led discussions around specific content. We provide some guidance to teachers around what to do with students and how to facilitate the conversations with kids. It's almost like a Socratic seminar would be the best way I could describe that, the, the interaction, but it's for kids to have the opportunity to kind of process content and to think about their, their reading. It could be a novel they read, they could be reading a poem, but it's, it's very much student-directed. For advanced mathematics, we have an enrichment program, which has been very, it's been very successful and highly popular at the schools. This is actually a copy of the teacher's guide. This is just one of them. And these ma, this math is really, it's, it's done as enrichment. So when I, the reason I point that out is because it's not designed to be a program that supplants the regular curriculum in gifted, regular curriculum in the classroom. So kids that are, for example, in third grade, still participate in the curriculum for third grade, but when they work with their teachers, they also have an opportunity to receive these enrichment opportunities. So in the mathematics curriculum, it's, they do, they do talk math. They talk about the vocabulary in mathematics. They do hands-on activities. The focus is really less on content, a little bit more on math processes. And you can see the trajectory on how the program is being rolled out over time. By 2021, it'll be in all, all the grade levels. So professional development around this has been a lot more robust. And we try to differentiate in some of the ways that we do this. We've received feedback from teachers around their 30 o'clock hours, and is there any way to do some of this online or do it through Canvas courses? And so right now, we provide 30 o'clock hour training that's required by law to all our kinder student teachers and to identified GT teachers, so the ones that will have gift, kids in their classroom in grades one through six. And then we now have Canvas courses for teachers to participate and receive some of their hours, which was not, we didn't use to have that. And we focus on all these areas that are bulleted that I mentioned tonight in terms of developing teachers, so they can implement those with fidelity in the classroom. In terms of family involvement, every campus has GT awareness meetings. We also have GT showcase at every campus where kids are able to showcase their projects and talk about their research, just so their parents have a sense of what they're actually working on. There's representation opportunity AIST at the back-to-school kickoff. And then we're still working on increasing continued opportunities for enhancing the parent relationships at the schools around gifted students individually. Where we're headed is the new state plan. So here are all the areas that we have to consider as we think about the state plan. You're going to see that the five of them are the same ones we talked about before, and then the fidelity services is new. There are only two categories now. Accountability means basically you're meeting expectation all the way to exemplary. And our goal, of course, is to create a program that is exemplary in nature. In year four, what you'll see happen next school year is we will continue with our GT pull-out and push-in in grades K through five. We will push our advanced mathematics across the school district for three through four. We just have pilot right now. We will launch the pilot for five and six. We will begin to do a program evaluation. So Barlow's Department will do a program evaluation around the work we've done against our goals and measures to see how we're doing. And then we will be adding to the website opportunities for parents to become more involved in the design of our gifted program. The next year, which will be the last year of our five-year rollout plan, would be to have push-in and pull-out for grades K through six. And you'll remember, when I, when we started, we had clustered groups in primary grades, and then we, each year, we added clustered groups as we went along. So by the time we get to the fifth year, we'll have them in all the grade levels. We'll continue to work on the enhancements. The, the mathematics program that was the pilot will then be district-wide. And then we'll start working on our next five-year plan. And our next five-year plan is going to focus on secondary services, specifically in junior high and high school, and how to make sure there's a continuum for kids that come from elementary school all the way through their graduation years. And the last thing I would, I wanted just to mention in, in the presentation is the connection of gifted services to the learner framework. So we've been actively working and implementing the active learning cycle. And next year will be our third cohort of campuses that are coming online. We'll have over 20 schools working on active learning cycle next year. And this is an incredible opportunity, because it allows, the implementation of the active learning cycle allows for us to differentiate for the needs of kids from the most challenged student, meaning the students who are struggling the most in certain content areas, all the way to the most gifted. Because the way that it's designed, our students are gaining access to activities that are based on a pre-assessment of their learning, where there's a pathway based on projects that they can actually participate in to acquire their new knowledge in a relevant way, based upon where their starting point is. And so for gifted, the great part is, when I enter into the bundle or the unit of study, I don't, and I already know a bunch of the content, I don't have to wait to have everyone else catch up to me before I can move on. I can start where I'm at and move forward from that place. And so as we continue to roll out our learner framework across the district and, and link these things intentionally to other services we provide gifted students, it will not only enhance their experience when they're pulled out, but their experience in the general ed environment will be enriched as well. Any questions?
Excellent information. It really is. I, I have some thoughts, but I'm waiting for other trustees. I knew we'd absolutely have some engagement here. Mr. Chapa, please.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. I, you probably mentioned this, and I, I just missed it, but we talked about the identification being in grades K two and four. What does that look like after grade four? Is there a process for that?
So we don't have a universal screener past grade four, but we do have a nomination process. So any, a person, a student can be nominated at any time for gifted services, and then we would put them through the same screening process. The, the, the K two and four is simply a universal screener. So it's what I would, the best way I can phrase it is like, it's a catchnet to make sure that every kid, every student we have, every student has an opportunity to actually be screened. But in the grades where those aren't happening, they can still be nominated, and, and that happens all the time through teachers. A parent can make a nomination. We still look for kids, yeah.
Okay. And then the other question I had is that you said there was about a 66% increase in the number of students identified as GT since 2015? And you, you ran through some of the challenges you're, you're experiencing in implementing the changes that you discussed in your, your presentation. But are there any sort of what I would call like growing pain issues that you're going through with expanding the number of students that have been identified so rapidly?
And I, I guess I could see the team, I have not received anything specifically around growing pains. I think the thing that I would say that we, that we worked through, we had to work through was, when we hired the lead teachers, for example, we placed, we, we did it responsibly, meaning we didn't just hire a teacher for every school. We waited until there were enough students to justify a need for that. And while we were going through that process of transition, there were pinch points where a lead teacher had to, it was a struggle in some places where they had to work through making sure the identification process was moving seamlessly, and they were able to pull students and then still go to the other school and do the same thing. Because the way the calendar had to work, you had two days at one place and two days another, and it became kind of unmanageable, which is, which, when we actually had enough students, it was very helpful to have one at every school. But other than that, it's been going pretty well. We've, we've really tried to do the training. The training has become a lot more efficient in that we have the face-to-face, which is still available to, to our members, our, our teachers, and also the online learning. The one other thing that's been helpful too is, it used to be a requirement where all teachers had to receive their 30 o'clock hours, because that, you could have a student in your classroom. And what we recognize is that's inefficient and not necessary. So now we identify who actually is going to have the gifted students, and those are the teachers that we spend the time really focusing on the training with. So I would say we learned through the process on how to make it more efficient, but I wouldn't say there was like, I mean, it wasn't negative in per se, yeah.
Okay. And then my last question is, putting this in some context, because I know different districts handle this program in different ways. How common is it for a district in Texas to have a GT, a dedicated GT teacher on each elementary school campus?
I, I could ask Karen what she thinks. I can tell you my experience. I've worked in a few districts, and I had a GT teacher in one of my schools where I was a principal. In the other district I was in, they were self-contained classrooms. So it really depends on your model. I think when you have clustered students, it's pretty common that there is some member either on the team that's responsible or someone that overlooks at a couple of schools, unless the model is a self-contained.
Would you say it's pretty common?
Yes. I think that the majority of Texas serves for the cluster model with a GT lead teacher and somebody on the campus leading the identification.
If, if you don't have a person, it becomes, that's when challenges happen in terms of implementation, yeah.
Well, that's great to hear, because I, I, I remember when I was getting involved in the district early on on financial futures. This was, and I see Mr. Wobanks out in the audience. This was something that came up on financial futures several years in a row. And the district around that 2014-15 timeframe had committed to making a lot of changes in that area. And so it's great to see those things come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. That's precisely why it, it was important to have this update now after several years of implementation, the five-year plan, to, to see and track the progress and the outcomes. And it's pretty impressive. So there's some other trustees that have questions or comments. Ms. Walton, please.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. I think you answered one of my questions, and we do have a GT lead teacher now on each elementary campus? Okay. Is there a, the breakdown by campuses as far as, you know, we got one for the whole district. Does it look pretty same or different, or?
There is variance. There is variance. We noticed that a lot at the beginning, and in, in terms of the question that Mr. Chapa was asking earlier in terms of growing pains, that was probably one of them. We had implementation in terms of identification and placement of students in some schools where it was robust, robust, and they, and it was seamless, and they were doing it with fidelity. And other schools where there was support that was needed, and, and we can notice that in the number of identification. So the team strategically went out and visited with those campuses, talked with the principals, and tried to figure out what, what in the system needed some shoring up. And, and so it's gotten a lot better. We do have data, I don't have it on me tonight, that actually has it by campus, where, which grade levels and in which campuses they're sitting in the norm about where we are. And you're really looking for identifying that, like I told you, that sweet spot around 7%. When you have campuses that are really, really high, that causes you to think about, well, maybe the, the process isn't quite going the way it's supposed to. Or if they're really, really low, that's also a challenge. So we kind of try to look and gauge based upon their numbers. But if, if you like them, I'm happy to write them, yeah.
Oh, that's all right. And I don't know, being a former librarian, I'm just thinking of all the gifted and talented children I have seen come through my library that probably could or could not have been identified. I wouldn't know. But it just seems like a natural fix, fit for what librarians do with self, you know, self-motivated research that kids are interested in and the gifted and talented. Is there any formal connections made between the GT kids, their lead teacher or their teacher, and the library, the library program?
Well, part of their, their pull-out opportunities include research. So one of the things that we were talking about earlier in terms of parent opportunities is the opportunity they have to do their showcases. And there, they get to demonstrate their projects and their research, so, yes, very much so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mrs. Fowler?
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Thank you, Dr. Wertz, to you and your team for this impressive work that you're doing in the district and all the opportunities that you're giving to the gifted and talented students. So thank you for that. I had a few questions. One is, if a student transfers from out of district, do they need to be tested? Are they automatically placed in a GT program? And kind of in the, in the same light, if they transfer between schools and they were in the gifted and talented program in one school, are they automatically?
That's a really good question. So I'll start with the Arlington ISD. If you're an Arlington ISD student and you're, you're identified in Arlington, If you're an Arlington ISD student and you're, you're identified in Arlington, you're always gifted. So you can go from school to school. Our expectations for implementation, the guidance we provide teachers, what they would do throughout the year in each grade level is the same. So you can seamlessly go from one campus to another and we would place you in another classroom where a cluster exists. That's how it would happen. If you come in from outside the district and you're identified as gifted, we place you in your gifted services and then you have, and we provide those services and then we'll put you through the screening process to understand what your needs are. But you always, you're, we, if you're coming in from outside the district and you're, you're identified as a gifted student, we honor that identification while we go through our process, yeah.
That's great. Thank you. My next question. Back in the day, there were the self-contained gifted and talented. There were the separate pulled out, not with the, the general students. Do you have any data that shows whether the cluster is working better as far as enrichment and those students achieving the most in they can rather than the self-contained?
So that's interesting. We don't have any self-contained in Arlington, so I don't have any data to look and compare our apples to apples. It's actually not very common that I'm aware of where you find self-contained gifted classrooms in this, in the state. It's almost like what Dr. Zeskey said, the most common model is a cluster group. We do have a neighbor that does that. The challenge around gifted in terms of measuring what it's doing is getting down to program design. And we had, we actually had this conversation recently, like what is the goal and intent around the gifted program? And it's not necessarily just to have exceptional star scores. So part of our program evaluation that we'll come back to even next year is to ident, like really look at what our actual program intentions are in terms of how we're intending to meet those students' needs so that we can measure the, the impact that a cluster group is actually having. One thing we do look at that we are, we've actually have some conversations in the team about is teachers who need additional support, some of the structures that schools are putting in place in terms of their I and E time, how kids are being, how they're having their opportunities to have their enrichment in pull-out met. And also when they're in the classroom in a, in a, in a, like self-contained environment with a general ed population and a mixed group and they're clustered in there, how those teachers are providing the enriched resources and experience in that classroom, which is a general ed environment. And the lead teacher's role is to push in to help with that. And I know that Amy and her team also provide the support to campus to make that happen. But to answer your question, in the district right now, we don't have any distinction between the two because we don't have any self-contained classrooms to compare to. And I only know of one neighbor in our area that does it, that I'm aware of.
I know way back when I first started teaching, they had levels. And it was gifted, talented, regular, and then basic. And I always felt like, and I taught some of the basic, and I always felt like if they could have had role models and others in the classroom, that they could have seen how they answered questions and how they did the discussion, that that might have helped them in their studies. So I, I like the idea that we do the clusters. I think that's important.
Yeah, you're sharing the justification of why a cluster group is beneficial not only to the gifted learner who could really benefit from a social environment that shows the breadth of the continuum of our, of, of students, and also the benefit that comes from the advanced learner and, and the general ed student who can be in the environment where they're challenged in a way that gifted students actually bring.
And I definitely think the GT can benefit from being in that, that situation as well. Last question. The learner framework is, and it's self-paced, is that kind of like the Montessori where you learn at your own pace and?
Okay, that's interesting. So, so it's not self-paced, but with the way that we do it is, the way we differentiate is when we're starting a unit and we're inspiring kids and getting them thinking about how we're about to learn is connected to their real world, there is a pre-assessment that students engage in that allows us to men, understand like how much they've already mastered in the content we're about to deliver. And then based upon the outcome of that assessment, which the students take and then they actually score with the teacher and they set their, they, the students then set their own target about where they want to be. So if they enter in at a level two and their goal is to hit a level three, which is what we would call proficient, they set a target for level two, three. And, but their starting point for activities and all the design is starting at level two and they work their way up. Now, the, the way that I would say it's self-paced is that students have the autonomy to work through their, their activities. And some can go fast and some will go a little bit slower, but they have the ability to go at that pace. The reason why I say it's not completely self-paced is because there is a timeframe at which we, we try to keep kids moving so they get through the curriculum, but we allow them to go a lot quicker or even slower if they need to. And they get to, they get to work through the activities at the different levels, which now in a, in a regular classroom where the framework is not implemented, that level of differentiation is not as common as what we're talking about where it's connected to rubrics and pre-assessments and moving students through relevant activities. But that's where we're headed.
Much more individualized.
Absolutely, yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Rice.
You turned yourself off.
Thank you, President Rice. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. A couple of my questions have been asked, so I will not repeat my questions. A couple of comments I want to make is we've come a long way from the parent picking up the phone and saying, "My baby's GT." And I remember those days. So I, I think this is awesome. And as Justin said, David, we served on the same committee, been really waiting to see how this was going to be implemented throughout the district and knew, knowing that it would be very positive. So I'm really excited about this. Also just want to make a comment that we talk about 100% of our students. And we're not just talking about race, we're not just talking about, you know, economics, but we're also talking about the level at which they learn. And this is capturing that level of the students learning at different levels and making sure that we're meeting their needs as well, including the ones that are at the top. So that's why I think this is very important. Thank you for doing the comparatives of before and after to show the difference because I think that's very important to understand why we decided to do this, why we're putting monetary resources towards doing this, because we really feel like there's going to be a huge benefit for our students. Screened versus nominated, I really like that. Takes some subjectivity out. Hopefully takes some pressure off the teachers of getting those phone calls again because now there's data that shows this is where the student should be at this particular time. Collaboration with the GT parents, I think that's, that's great. Be very excited to see how that continues to grow. One question I did have is once the students are identified as gifted at a particular level, kindergarten, second, fourth, do we continue to evaluate or screen that they're still getting what they need out of that program?
Well, we would monitor their progress like we would any student based upon what we would expect them to, how they perform even in their enrichment activities and all of that. We do not re-screen them for giftedness. Once you're gifted, you're gifted. So that's not an attribute that we look for a second time. So once you're in the program, you're in the program, but we do monitor your progress based upon what we believe that your, your outcomes should be or your needs are.
Okay. I also like the combination of the, the cluster versus the self-paced. And I know that it wouldn't be a, a self-paced one or two grades above, but to allow a student who may reach a certain point of reading, that could actually go up a little bit more, allow them the opportunity to do that, I think keeps the students engaged in the classroom and takes some of that boredom out that some of us experience with our children in the classroom. So I think that's great because I think that helps behavior as well. And it also reminds me, we're talking about the cluster and allowing students to self-pace themselves, kind of like, like running track. You, you run and you try to beat your time every time you run, but if you put someone out there that can run faster than you, you're going to push yourself a little harder. So I can truly see the benefit of keeping them correct in the classroom to help, to help do that. One last question. You gave some examples of non-verbal testing. Can you maybe give another example of why non-verbal testing is so important to make sure that we all understand the importance?
Yeah, so if you think about giftedness, it's a trait. And sometimes if you're a kindergarten student, for example, and you're not a reader or writer, we would often say, oh, they're gifted because they're exceptional, they're way above grade level in reading, or they're really exceptional in the way they do their math. But if it's a trait and it's a way that you process information, the way that you see the world and think about the world, there has to be a way for us to try to assess that in a way that doesn't require you to like speak vocabulary words and, you know, do things, so academics. So the purpose of those assessments allows for us to, even in our young children, like kindergarten, who haven't acquired the skills to actually communicate the way they would normally need to or be able to, where they can actually put words to the way that they think, allows us to capture their giftedness, knowing that they, hey, they look at shapes and they can actually see how things fit together in a way that's not typically common. They think and process information in unique ways. We want to tap into that. And so it allows us to find kids in a much younger age that don't need to rely on words to express their thinking.
Thank you. I just wanted to hear it again because it gives me gooseies when I hear that because there's, there's so many students that are gifted and maybe because they didn't have that time at home with mom to learn ABCs at a particular time versus others, it now brings about some equality.
That's right.
Amongst the students being able to be identified as gifted. So I love that and I will end on that.
We'll end on gooseies. That's great. I, I agree, absolutely. So with, with the increase, do you see a, a trend of a certain percent growth in, in the number of students identified in, in each year? Or is it pretty much a consistent amount that's identified in each grade?
Let me go back to-
Gaining momentum, slowing down, that kind of thing.
So ideally you want to, you should start to see some steadiness because if you're identifying kids early and earlier, those cohorts start to just go, matriculate up the grade levels. When you get to before where those, where the screeners weren't necessarily there and when we did screen, we screened for them at later years. I was trying to find the slide that actually had the data on it. Here we go. You'll find that it starts to, as you start using screeners, you'll start finding more kids. And so you'll notice in our other, in our previous 2015, you'll notice it starts to grow and grow and grow and grow and grow. And, and this is kind of, the, one of the ways I like to think about it too is it's kind of natural to think that way, right? The more I can acquire my reading and writing skills, the more that a typical person would say, wow, you seem bright or you seem like you're an outlier compared to the rest of my class. But that doesn't necessarily show itself up really quickly in the primary grades like kindergarten when they first come to school and they're just learning how to do school. You had to look for different traits. So you'll notice on this, on 2019, you're going to notice that our numbers, our numbers are, are growing from the 2015, which is good. I still think that you're going to find that as kids matriculate, there's evidence of things that pop up as they go. So you're going to see some of the numbers grow, you're going to see them start to steady out a little. So for example, if you look at second grade where screeners happen and we start moving into like third grade and fourth grade, the, the difference between the bands start to shrink a little bit. I don't know if you're ever going to find a place where they're totally even, but I don't think you'll see the disparity that you did before where you had kindergarten with very little and then you had hundreds in the upper grades.
Okay, very good. And is there differentiation as far as ability grouping of, of GT where some are, are testing or through the identification parameters, you know, very high in, in say, reading versus not so much in math? I know that's something that we talked about at the beginning. So is that still part of, part of the process or?
Yeah, you can still, you can qualify in some areas and not in others.
Yeah.
You don't have to qualify in all academic areas to be labeled as a gifted student.
That's excellent. And along the lines of your, your response to Mrs. Fowler, are there, is there data that you're able to look at now or in the future that is maybe more objective versus subjective related to how they are maybe improving academically versus, I don't know that there's a, a control or a baseline, but with, with the other students, say, as far as the clusters in, in the classroom for both the GT as well as regular change in discipline situations or issues? Or just raising up the, the general population as well with the, the GT program clusters as well? Anything like that? And maybe it's a Dr. Barlow question too.
I think that's definitely a possibility. As you're talking, I can already think of models that I would probably do. We haven't studied that to date, but as we go into the program evaluation, those will be some things that we'll look at. And I do feel like there are quantifiable ways of measuring not only academic progress, but the academic progress or growth of people, of stu, other students who sit in a classroom where a cluster exists versus not. Those are all ways we can analyze and, and differentiate through the data. We just haven't done that to date.
Yeah. Well, and I, I'm asking, of course, because we, we are, we really have an intelligent approach of what we do in the district here, but also in being able to be somewhat of a benchmark and an example to other districts. That here's, here's this defined screening model and, and process and program that we've come up with and here's the outcomes data to support it so that we, we can be of benefit to others in other districts as well. So, and then the final question that I have is with, as Ms. May said, the, the parent engagement and involvement, that's, that is very exciting. To this point, do you have any formal or informal surveying of parent satisfaction at this point?
Specifically around gifted? No.
Okay.
I would say if, if we're being completely transparent, that I do believe parent involvement is still an opportunity for us to grow and develop. Eventually you want to get to a place where you have an association and parents are involved and they're brought together on a regular basis and they serve on committees. We haven't gotten to that place. So when we think of our next steps, that's actually one of the team's target points is around the parent involvement piece. We've made progress. We have showcase now, there's parent, parents that, that are communicated with at campuses in ways that we hadn't done before. But in terms of like a real strong parent organization that's connected to the gifted learner, that's an opportunity for us.
Right, right. Well, I, I appreciate that, that candor and that combined with the, the previous comments. Ultimately, this would be a great model to present to our legislators at the state level. We are in the middle of a legislative session currently. We're very focused on public education finance and, and reform. And I know GT is maybe something that's included or not, and if it ever is a topic of conversation, it's something that we can certainly inject, again, that intelligent approach that we have here in Arlington ISD. So thank you very much. I don't see any, oh, I do, I'm sorry. One more, Mr. Bowie-Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I even pushed it before you started talking, so.
Did you?
I was trying to give you the last word. I'm still stuck on Ms. May's gooseies. I don't know what, is that a GT word that I don't understand? Hey, Dr. Wertz, let me, let me just thank you and, and thank this board and, and future board member. We identified and we were behind on GT, just plain and simple. We, we like to be very transparent and we were. And I commend you and your entire GT team for getting this up. We knew, we knew those first year or two were going to be rough. We heard about it some when teachers were having to split some of the GT lead teachers, but we knew it was the right model going forward and I really commend it. And the numbers speak for themselves. Let me ask, we talked about, this was answered a little bit. When we originally put this in place, we talked about, you know, Richardson, some other school districts use some of these same models. Have we identified, when those kids come in and they've been identified, are, are we retesting them? And, and I think you mentioned it, but I just wanted to specifically districts that run the same type of program we run, are, are we automatically counting them as identification? Are we, are then going in and retesting them?
Well, every district has the ability to screen in their own way. Like you, they, they might have a similar program model, but the way they screen identify giftedness varies from district to district. So we do honor the fact that they were gifted. We don't not put that, like if you're, if you're gifted and you come from Richardson, we're going to place you in a gifted program. But we will, we will go through an assessment process to understand what your needs are so that we can make sure that they're met.
And so let me, let me ask, because one of the things, the great thing about having a gifted and talented program is we identify all the kids. The bad thing about having a really strong gifted and talented program is every parent thinks their child, many of them think they're gifted and talented. And I, I learned quickly, just because you're advanced doesn't mean you're gifted and talented in a program. So there's, and, and as Ms. May said earlier, there could be a child that didn't get everything home, but they're truly gifted and talented and they're not as advanced and it takes these identifications. What do we do for our parents who truly believe their child's gifted and talented and, and they're not?
We-
Or we haven't identified them, is that, let me say, let me, let me, let me go back on that word.
And we're not identified as-
See, the parent, every child's gifted and talented. We didn't identify them, is that, yeah? I told you I shouldn't ask any questions though, so.
Right. No, I think it's important for us to be transparent with parents about our process. So if their child was to go through the screening process, it would be important for us if they had a, there's an appeal process. It can be appealed. But even if the appeal doesn't, if, if, let's say for example, the appeal wasn't successful and they truly are not identified as a gifted and talented child based on our criteria, we would meet with them and talk with them about what, what it is that we noticed in terms of their child's strengths and where their opportunities are. That way their needs are met. And to me, that's the most important thing around the gifted program. It's not that there is a specialized experience for gifted students. That's not the point. The point is that there, we recognize that there's something, a, a need that you have as a child in your learning experience and it's our obligation to meet that need. And so I think for us, and I, if I have a parent who has the perception of one thing, but the actual need of the child is something different, it's important for us to have a collaborative conversation with the parents to help them understand like how we intend or can meet the actual needs of their students. And sometimes it's just about education, meaning teaching parents about what it actually means for a state label as a gifted. It doesn't mean your child isn't really advanced, or that they're exceptional in their academics, but they're our criteria for what we call gifted. And that doesn't necessarily take away from your child's abilities at all. It just means that we meet them in a different way.
I appreciate that. And I also appreciate, I've talked to many teachers about the way we do the testing. And it's that identification that, the problem with testing is high stakes testing.
Mm-hmm.
All testing's not bad. There's some testing that has some benefits there. It's the high stakes and the high stakes nature. Because most of these tests, I've talked to enough teachers, it's just something they do. Kids don't think twice about it. There's not huge pressure placed on them. It's just something to help identify. So I appreciate the staff for putting that together. Let me ask if a child is in the GT, and you kind of said it, once they're GT, they're always GT, is there a reason, if they want to self-pull out, or do we ever identify and pull them out of that GT cluster for?
Meaning they want to-
They don't want to be-
There is a process for that.
Yeah.
If a student is in a program, gifted program, and they no longer want services and the parent no longer wants some serv-, them to have services, they can opt out.
But we don't go back and test or anything of that nature to-
I, I have a double check. It's so rare that a parent would pull their child from services and put them back in it.
I wouldn't think so.
It would be almost redundant. Like if you're gifted, you're gifted. But it's, you can't furlough, you can't. So when you're in a gifted program, you could furlough your giftedness or gifted services per se. And I've seen it done before where a student would furlough their access to gifted services for a year and then rethink about it and come back in, or you can, you can terminate your-
And on rare occasions, do we ever identify someone and then realize maybe it wasn't the right identification?
I don't know how common that is. Is that very-
Very rare.
Wow, that's really rare.
Okay, I would think so.
It's usually pretty, it becomes pretty obvious.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and let me just say, Dr. Rice mentioned this a little bit. Gifted and talented, I know you all are probably worried about it. As the legislature discussed and pulling out GT funding specifically and putting it in the general fund, I understand the concern around the state, but I, I have to commend this board. I was not worried about it from this district because we've shown we're committed to GT. So even if they say you, it goes in the general fund, we, we've committed. So I just, I think I have to reiterate to this board, this GT program, we, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of access money when we added this on that front. And we had to cut some other things to get to this, but we realized we were behind. We committed that. So don't get paranoid on the legislature. We have enough other things to be paranoid on them about. We're, we're going to, we're going to make sure GT is a critical program because you can see the numbers. We've got to identify those kids. And if you don't, we all know, if you don't identify a GT kid, sometimes they can be a problem in the classroom. They're not getting the services they need. They're, I, I talked to a dad today at a funeral of a young man I went to school with and he was truly GT. And he was so highly GT, class was very boring, very outward. And now he's a thriving orthopedic surgeon that is just above and beyond. And we all knew was way smarter than the rest of us every single day. So truly that level. And he's one that didn't have those services when we were young kids. So I, I really appreciate and I immediately thought of him today as, as we were going through this. So I appreciate you and your staff for all the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. I, I don't see any further lights for more questions or discussion. Just thank you so very much for all of the information, for the update, for all the work that, that you are, are doing and, and all of the, the lead teachers in the district matriculating all these children through. And it's wonderful stuff. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. We will continue on our agenda. Discussion item C, the legislative update. Dr. Cabasos?
Thank you, President Rice. And as every board meeting, we bring a legislative update and keep everyone informed with the progress. And so I'm going to ask Cindy Powell to share an update of our legislative progress and our advocacy, et cetera.
Yes, Dr. Rice, board members, Dr. Cabasos, good evening again. We are now at day 108 of this legislative session, the 86th legislature. That's 77% of the way through the session. We have 32 days, long days left to go. I put this calendar up here and it's hard to read in, in great detail, but I'm going to point out just a, a couple of these dates. We are fast approaching the month of May and there will be a number of procedural deadlines that both the, that the House primarily hits in even the next week and a half. The House has a number of dates prescribed in their rules of how they operate. The Senate really does not. They can basically process bills to a much later date than the House can. The reality though is the timeline for moving a bill all the way through both chambers is similar for both the House and the Senate. So the dates you see here for the House, while they're not prescribed as deadlines for the Senate necessarily, to keep things moving along, they, you know, these dates pretty much apply to the Senate as well. The first date of note is May 6th, and that's the last day for House committees to report out House bills and House joint resolutions. So that's just 11 days from now. Then also on the 9th, that is the last day for the House to consider on second reading, House bills and House joint resolutions on the daily or supplemental calendar. Jump all the way ahead then to the, to Saturday, actually, the 18th. The last, that is the last day for the House committees to report out Senate bills. And I'll point out that we just got an agenda, there was an agenda posted today for the House Public Ed Committee hearing next Tuesday. And this is the first House Public Ed Committee hearing at which they will be hearing Senate bills. And that's all that are on that agenda for next week. So you're starting to see that there's going to be a sprint, I think, to the finish because any, any education-related bill that's coming out of the Senate that would be a likely candidate to go to House Public Ed, they're just now starting to, to move through that process. The next one I would point out is on the 21st. That is the last day for the House to consider second reading of Senate bills and Senate joint resolutions on their daily or supplemental calendar. And then finally, May 27th is the last day for the 87, or 86 rather, legislature. And so a couple of days prior to that is really the deadline for them to take any final action on bills in both chambers. That last day is really reserved for nothing more than corrections to bills. So we're about to get to a point where it seems to be rather chaotic because you have bills that have crossed chambers and a number of bills trying to come out of committee quickly and get to calendars. So it's a, it's kind of a, what I always feel like is a real chaotic time. You all are all aware that we have a legislative agenda. You see the three priorities of our agenda, local authority and then relevant instructional programs that reflect the provisions in House Bill 5 that was passed three sessions ago, and then suitable funding for public ed and relief from unfunded mandates. This is a summary of the five broad categories of items that we address in our legislative agenda. We track bills that fall into these different categories. In terms of accountability, there are two bills of interest, both filed by Chris Turner, really at, after visiting with us and hearing some concerns we had had over transparency on accountability data. And so he had two kind of similar bills. One was House Bill 3011, and it would require the Higher Ed Coordinating Board to release to school districts the data that they receive from other sources, such as College Board, that, that the board then passes on to TEA for them to use in the accountability system. House Bill 3007 is similar, but it would require the TEA release data that they get from outside sources to school districts before TEA then uses them for the accountability rating system. Both those bills have passed the full House and they now move to the Senate for consideration.
Can I ask a question on that? Is there any, any indication how the Senate's going to be receiving this at this point?
I, I don't. In the House, even House Bill 3007 passed on third reading tonight. It was a unanimous vote. There seems to be broad support for both these bills on both second and third readings. I have not heard that there would be any opposition in the Senate. I think it's just a matter at this point is, does it make it all the way through the process?
Right. Thank you.
In terms of public education finance and then tax relief plans, you know, this has been considered to be the big topic of this session. There, we're seeing a lot of activity on both sides, both the House and the Senate at the moment. And so what I've created here is a little side-by-side chart that shows the different bills that exist in both the House and the Senate for school finance and for property tax relief. On the House side, there are three bills. One is House Bill 1, which is the budget. House Bill 2 is tax relief and House Bill 3 is the school reform, finance reform package. And House Bill 2 pretty much is dead now. Procedurally, it won't move anywhere because the, the tax relief provisions have been put into House Bill 3. In terms of the Senate, the Senate has four bills relating to school finance. The first one is the budget, SB1. And then SB2 is the tax relief bill. SB3 is a, is a bill that just provides raises for teachers and librarians. And then SB4 is their version of school finance reform. So similarly, the tax relief provisions for school districts have, have been stricken from SB2 and moved into SB4. And then likewise, the raise provision that is in SB3 has been moved into SB4. And I should probably back up on House Bill 2. That bill will continue to move forward for cities and counties, but the school piece of that is, is no longer active. Both the House and the Senate have appropriated $9 billion of new funding for public ed in their respective budgets. But as you can see in the top bullet on each, in each box, they, they actually are allocating those funds in different ways. They both plan to spend 2.7 billion on tax relief. And the Senate then plans to, to appropriate a total of $4 billion for teacher raises, teachers and librarians. That would leave them with just 2.3 billion to make all other forms of, of reform to the school finance system. On the House side, they have the 2.7 billion for tax relief and then the entire remainder of the $9 billion, that's $6.3 billion is available for, for school finance reform, including raises. So House Bill 3 is the primary school finance bill on the House side. That bill has been modeled by legislative consultants and the most current version of the bill is passed by the House. If it were to pass today, would generate an estimated $32 million of new money for, for Arlington ISD. In terms of property tax relief, that bill would require every school district to lower what they're referring to as the, the tier one portion of your tax rate, which is the rate up to a dollar. You would have to lower that by four cents or to 96 cents from where, where it is today. And then there would be no compression on the next six pennies of tax, which are referred to often as golden pennies. And then for the remaining 11 pennies, up to the maximum of, of a dollar 17, districts that, that are taxing anywhere above a dollar six would have to compress their tax rate by multiplying however many pennies they have in that range by .6623. In terms of programming funding that's in the bill, there's a new early education allotment in this bill that would essentially fund full-day pre-K. And there's, the bill also mandates that, that pre-K be full day, beginning in the 19, 20 years. There are provisions for waivers for this. District can get a waiver if implementing full-day pre-K would mean that you have to construct facilities. It would also, you also have the opportunity for a waiver if implementing full-day pre-K means that you would serve fewer students than you are currently serving. So if you found that you could not hire all the additional teachers you need for full-day pre-K, you could get a waiver and not have to implement it in that, that first year. There's also, State Comp Ed is an allotment we get today. It's an allotment that comes to us based on the number of our students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch. We spend that money then on students who meet the state, one of the state's 13 at-risk criteria. That's the only place you could spend that money. In House Bill 3 and then also similarly in Senate Bill 4, there is a change in how that money is, is directed to schools. That money comes to school districts based on what they call a spectrum of poverty. So they actually track students by census blocks. And the more impoverished a census block is considered, the more funding it, it generates in this particular allotment. And so the, the attempt is to direct more money to schools that have greater concentrations of poverty. And then finally on raises, there's a provision in this bill that says that 25% of the gain in the basic allotment would be used, have to be used for raises for educators. And they define that very specifically as any position, it's not just educators, it's all employees actually, other than administrators. Okay? So on the Senate side, Senate Bill 4 has just really been released as of yesterday. The bill was filed by the deadline in March, but it was really just considered a shell, a placeholder if you will, and had a number of blanks. And there were really, there were no details available around this bill until yesterday, when there started to be some, some little tidbits floating about as to what would be in the committee substitute. That bill was heard by the Senate Ed Committee today in the hearing and Chairman Taylor laid out the committee substitute. So this has really been since, we've had about a day and a half now of seeing, having opportunity to see this bill at all. So there have been no runs from legislative consultants yet as to what, what this bill might mean for any district. And so we can't say today what the impact to us would be. In terms of property tax relief, where House Bill 3, 4 rather, 3, would have school districts lower their, their base tax rate by four pennies, the Senate version has districts lower their tax rate by eight pennies. The second year, there could potentially be another seven cent reduction in the tax rate. And that would occur only if the voters in a constitutional amendment vote to increase the state sales tax by 1%. So it's contingent on that, but there could be potentially additional reduction in the tax rate in year two. This, this bill also makes some reduction in those copper pennies that we talked about a minute ago. If you tax anywhere above a dollar six today, your district would be required to reduce those number of pennies of tax by half. And then similarly on those golden pennies, the first eight cents above a dollar, you are not required, there is no compression there. This bill would also raise the homestead exemption for homeowners to $40,000. So that'd be a $15,000 increase. It's another attempt to, to provide property tax relief. And then, and again, I mentioned the sales tax. If a sales tax increase is approved, there will be some additional tax reduction in that second year. Terms of major programming provisions, the, the one thing that is very different than the House version is the Senate version of school finance would require school districts to use current year property values in calculating the state aid that they are, are to receive under the state funding formulas. This would have a, an effect, potentially a negative impact of Arlington, on Arlington of say $18 million. So that's one element of the overall plan. So if they are making up that dis-, that difference, then it's not a problem. But we've not seen yet that, that there's specific funding allocated to make up that, that difference in the year it's implemented. In those subsequent years after that implementation, the state funding formulas essentially take care of that, that switch. It's only in year one where there would be that dramatic reduction. The problem though continues year after year because we don't have our certified property- property values from the parent appraisal district at the point that we adopt our budget. And that's the case with all districts that have a July one fiscal year start, which is the majority of school districts. And so it makes it very hard to accurately project your state aid if you do not have certified property values. And that's, that element, that one element has probably the biggest impact on the amount of state aid you will receive. So there are a number of districts, especially large urban districts and fast-growth districts that have some very serious concerns around that. There's a, there is funding through an early education allotment, just like House Bill Three, that essentially pays for full-day pre-K. And this bill also mandates that full-day pre-K take effect in this upcoming year. They likewise, they have a similar plan for distributing the state comp ed money along that spectrum of poverty in order to, to direct more money to students or to campuses that have greater concentrations of poverty. In terms of raises, this bill actually incorporates a standalone provision that had been in Senate Bill Three up to this point, and that is that, that requires that, that school districts give every teacher and every librarian a $5,000 raise, and the state would fund that. It only addresses teachers and librarians, and that represents for most districts, including ours, about half of the total employee base. And so there's no funding provided for raises for other employees. So that, that's kind of a tricky thing for most districts.
Ms. Powell, can I add something?
Yes.
So a, as we're sitting there talking, and I did not get to track the legislature day, but it looks like, I just cautioned my colleagues, and Ms. Powell, thank you for all and your staff for all the work. It looks like I read that Senator Taylor is now putting this into HB Three. So I just caution people, be careful on HB Three now that's going through the Senate. I was just looking up to try and see if it officially passed today or not. I, I can't see, and I haven't pulled it up in time. To see if it officially passed, I know they're still down there working right now to pass through. But Senate Bill HB Three is now coming from the Senate. It'll of course go to conference to finalize and get that. But some of the things he included in there are outcomes-based funding for students. So there, there's some, there's some trials and tribulations, as you know, to track that. But I just caution colleagues, as we all see HB Three as a very positive thing. Now let's make sure we're not getting twisted and flipped on HB Three that is not what the House passed and fully differences. We know it's going to go to conference, and they'll come out with a solution. But just a, a little, little item, it looks like what they're passing and how they're trying to push this through to get their pieces in place. The outcomes-based funding, as we know, you know, the, the increases are outstanding, but it doesn't include some critical people in our district to do that. So in essence, creates almost an unfunded mandate for us because this district is historically funded all of our staff. And so it, there's some, there's some real concerns over what happens, and also some things that happen in future years that are required in 2023 and some of those things that come through. So I think, Ms. Powell, when you give that quick little update, as I was trying to, trying to get a quick little update on some of the items I read.
Very, very good point. Today, in, first of all, House Bill Three's passed the House, moved to the Senate. Today, Senate Ed had a hearing on both House Bill Three and Senate Bill Four. And so they've laid out the, the substitute for Senate Bill Four. And as Mr. Hogg said, the intention, the expectation was that Senate Ed will substitute their, their provisions of Senate Bill Four into House Bill Three. Assuming that that passes out of Senate Ed and then passes the full Senate, it would go back to the House, and the House would have to agree to the Senate's plan. And it's widely expected that they will not. And at that point then, is when they would call for a conference committee. So I think what, what I have been told as of late yesterday is that the expectation is that Senate Ed would vote out potentially Senate Bill Four sometime next week, and then maybe early that following week, it would make it to the full Senate for a vote and then go back to the House. So it's, we, everyone fully expects, as Mr. Hogg said, that this is headed for a conference committee to work out the differences. In tier, in terms of TRS Active Care, this is something that we've worked on actively through this session. We have worked with Matt Kraus to file a bill, and he filed House Bill 2097. It was co-signed by all five of the Arlington representatives. That bill would authorize Arlington ISD to operate a pilot healthcare plan outside of the TRS system. That bill had a hearing on April 4th, and Louie Hogg, Dr. Carvasso, Scott Kail all testified. At that hearing, the committee chair, Dan Huberty, asked that TRS and AISD meet to discuss what, what, what the ask was basically from the district and what, what measures we think that we could implement that would have a different outcome on healthcare cost and benefits than what TRS Active Care offers. We actually had that meeting. It was a very productive meeting, it was last week. And TRS has agreed to allow Arlington ISD to conduct or to work with them to design a plan that implements some of those consumer-driven models that, that we have been discussing for quite some time. And we would do it, though, within the umbrella of TRS. We would not actually exit TRS Active Care. So we would partner with them on that design, and then we would shop the plan together. And then that plan would be available to Arlington ISD employees if we all agree that the plan makes sense, beginning September of 2020. So we have written a letter to memorialize the meeting and to set out the framework for this project, and we are, are preparing to send that to TRS in the next day or so. In terms of just TRS itself, Senate Bill Twelve by Senator Huffman would increase contributions that TRS would make to the system to make it financially sound. In the Senate version of the bill, the state and school districts and individual members would increase more to TRS every year, and they would increase this over a period of six years. And the, the, the bill would grant current retirees what they call a 13th check, which that's in lieu of giving them a raise. It's like a one-time payment that they're not committed to continue repeating, but would give all retirees a 13th check of $500. The House version of that bill, and that, the Senate Bill Twelve passed the House and has gone to the, or passed the Senate and has gone to the House. So the House version of it would require the state to increase its contributions to TRS, but nobody else, not school districts and not employees. And it also provides for a 13th check of an amount up to $2,400 per retiree. And so this bill likewise is headed to a conference committee to, to work out differences between the two chambers. So those are the, the, the primary bills, especially on, on school finance and the TRS Active Care at the moment that we are working. We are beginning to get to a point with the committees that the bills that are being heard in the next week for the first time likely will not move forward. So our focus is very much on the school finance and, and the property tax relief and the TRS Active Care bills. And so I, you know, I put a picture on the end of each one of these that we've done, and this one is a marathon because, as we all know, this is 140-day session, and it's, it's truly like a marathon. And at this point, if, if a marathon is 26.2 miles, we're at mile 20, being 77% of the way through. And so people are starting to get tired, and I, I think we're going to see some folks who have been very cooperative and collegial with each other. I, I think that's all about to change. And, and just to be very honest, I, I think we have some concern and that, that additional funding for public ed does not appear, appear to be as likely as it did when we started. There's a great deal of concern that the two chambers will not reach a compromise and consensus on school finance, and that there's a very real possibility that the session will end with somewhat of a stalemate on school finance, and we'll all walk away with very little, if anything. So there's a lot of work to be done in the next month. So that, take any questions you have.
All right. Thank you very much for the update, Ms. Powell. Yeah, we, we can still have hope, and, and who knows if, if it ends sinny-dye, if there will be a special session or not. And if there is not, and we don't have any significant finance, that kind of steers us in a certain direction as a, as a body. If it goes into a special session, it really leaves us still hanging on and having to make some hurried decisions later on in the summer, unfortunately. Are there trustees that have questions at this time? So I just, I want to publicly acknowledge, commend everybody that's involved in this process, this session. You guys have been incredibly engaged to the governance committee. Thank you very much. It is a, a huge lift, and we were all so very, very excited towards the beginning of this. And I'm still holding on to a glimmer of hope, but you're, you're kind of dropping that wind out of my sail, Mrs. Powell. But thank you for keeping up, keeping us abreast of all this. We, we have been so active this session, and it is, it is noticed. And I'm certain that if there are communications that need to be had by this, this board and this district to, whether it's Chairman Taylor or anybody else, we will be at the ready to do that in hopes of some kind of salvage in this process. So thank you very much, and yeah, we are running out of time. We'll see what happens. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. So we now come to the open forum for non-agenda items on the agenda this evening. And I do have three cards. However, it was brought to my attention that these, these cards are in relation to a current grievance that is going on through the appeals process within the district. And anytime there's a grievance, it's, it's really driven by court decision, but it's, it's for your protection as the grievant that we, we can't hear any information because the, the grievance process, it may come to us as a body, as a board. And I know there's been some documents applied. I have not looked at them, whether it's to discuss the, the content of the grievance or the process of the grievance, we, we can't hear that because it, it, it then puts us in a situation where we can't maybe even hear your grievance if it comes to, rises to the occasion of the board. So I, like I said, I haven't looked at these documents. I'm going to give them back to Mrs. Benjamin because I don't, I want to keep our process pure here. So because of that, we, we can't hear comments this evening related to the grievance. And I don't see any other cards for other non-agenda items, so we're, we're just going to move on at this point on the agenda. Thank you. All right. So the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Carvasso.
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to share some information about our school districts. So first, and you look at the screen, we've got a good amount of information that, that's been happening. At Sam Houston High School, we've had a record-setting 11 TCU scholars. And if you haven't heard, which I'm sure everybody has heard by now, but these are the students, and I'll let you look at them for a minute. Each student receives $260,000-plus for TCU as a scholarship, plus a study abroad paid for by TCU. Sam Houston is one of 13 area schools that have the community scholars program, and between 40 and 50 scholarships are awarded annually. Congratulations to Sam Houston. They had the most, this is the most they've had, and the most that any school has had this year. So congratulations to them. Our Dan Diaper Career Tech Center and staff, and the Parent Community Engagement Department destination success, they joined forces this year for a, a large college and career expo that had both college fair and our high school juniors and seniors, seniors at the career fair. More than 630 people attended, and there were 54 colleges, 42 businesses, and many others that participated. So thank you to our Career Tech Center, we thank them all the time, and the PACE department as well. The annual teacher job fair was on March the 30th, and we also saw record numbers there. More than 1,200 people registered for the job fair regarding teacher job fair. This is just, just for teachers. We had great feedback. Everything ran very smoothly. Our principals were engaged, our HR department, and I commend communications, marketing, HR, and all our staff that helped with this, this very successful job fair together. Our Teacher of the Year, Teachers of the Year have been honored many times over, and we'll do it again tonight, with Kiwanis Luncheon and District-wide Teacher of the Year ceremony, both this month. Congratulations to Melanie Keraway from Ashworth, Jocelyn Epley from Bowles Junior High, and Miriam Mohammed from Turning Point Secondary for being honored as Kiwanis Teacher of the Year, and to all our campus participants. Again, thank you to Janet Workman there with Kiwanis as well for her years of, of doing this and being engaged with us on that. Our Parent and Community Engagement Department has also been very busy this past month, hosting luncheons and dinners for our stakeholders, business practicum stakeholders, current and former board members. And it's important that we keep our stakeholders informed of the happenings of the school district, and, and they really appreciate it. They get one-on-one time with us, and we get to answer a lot of questions, and we appreciate their engagement. We had the Education Foundation celebration at Six Flags Over Texas and a few weeks ago, and many of our students' groups performed, and families enjoyed a private party. The Education Foundation is outstanding, as we've said before. This is a milestone for them. They've raised over a million dollars over the past six years through this event alone, which is really amazing. And if you see the, the picture with that on the right, I think we see somebody from the board there, but I, I don't know if that's, if that's him or not. It was said it was him, so I don't know. We can, we, looks familiar.
He's doing it for the kids.
So, and I'm glad he's still with us here. He came tonight. All right. So April 13th was a busy day for our district. That morning, our family expo and summer resource fair was hosted by the PACE department. And the, the event was the largest that they've had thus far. Annual Entrepreneurship Day ceremony at UTA College Park. Hundreds of students were recognized. Anybody who attended that was on stage shook a lot of hands, and they were all excited to shake our hands. So it was, it was really good. Our second cohort of campus leaders to participate in the Holdsworth Center Leadership Program were surprised last week with their selection. I want to thank our area superintendents and all our leadership staff for putting all this together and selecting them. But we have, and we are excited for the teams of Atherton, Blanton, Bergen, Ellis, Miller, and Peach Elementary, as well as Bowie and Seguin High Schools. They're our next cohort for the Holdsworth training, and so they were very excited and very honored. We had Mariachi's here as well from Sam Houston High School to celebrate them. Arlington ISD honored six of its campus leaders on April 17th with year-end awards. Congratulations to the district's assistant principal, principals, and Dean of the Year honorees. Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Goldston from Atherton. Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Nix from Bailey Junior High. Dean of the Year was Ms. Lundeen from Seguin High School. Our Rookie Principal of the Year, and, and again, thanks to the area superintendents for, for putting all this together and honoring our leaders. They were very appreciative. Rookie Principal of the Year was Ms. Longoria from Hill Elementary. Elementary Principal of the Year was Dr. Lee from Peach Elementary. And Secondary Principal of the Year was Mr. Benavides from Sam Houston High School. So a great job to them. They represent our campus leaders exceptionally well. They're deserving of this honor. They were surprised, there were some tears, I think by all of them actually. And so we just an outstanding event, and I appreciate the leadership of our, of our departments and our principals. Our students always impressed us at the media fair, and this year was no different. Media fair was held Tuesday. We really enjoyed these students' demonstration of learning. We shook a lot of hands there, too, a lot of them. And congratulations to the Best of Shows winner, Jayden, Carlos, Damian, and Chelsea from Blanton. And secondary Best of Show was Shelby from Sam Houston High School. from Sam Houston High School. Finally, I want to recognize both our March and April Teachers of the Month. In March, we honored Pamela Barnes from Ashworth, Tiffany Seaberry from Carter Junior High, Molly Haney from Martin High School. And today, we honored the April Teachers of the Month, Ashley Williams from Webb, Lori Green from Bowles, and Catherine Beaver from Venture High School. Great job to these teachers. They are, uh, again, demonstrate excellence and represent our teachers exceptionally well. Uh, this is fun because they're surprised. The kids are surprised. The kids are very excited for them. They get fifty dollars from the, uh, edu, uh, from the credit union. Um, and of course, they, they are just beside themselves. So thank you to our teachers, and congratulations to them as well. That concludes my report.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Great things going on, that's for sure. Trustees, with any? Any reports? Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Reich. Um, I just have one addition to add. Today, um, attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony, along with yourself and Mr. Aaron Peralis, um, for the Arlington Life Shelter. Very excited about the new building that's coming up. I know they assist us a lot with a lot of our students. Um, this will have an opportunity for our students to have more, um, kind of one-on-one mentoring education. It will also allow families to be able to stay together. Um, obviously, if you're already in an unstable environment, you want to try to keep as many things consistent as possible, and that's attending the school that you go to, as well as being able to stay overnight with your parents. So just really excited about, um, the Arlington Life Shelter, being able to expand their facilities.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Yes, it was, uh, it was a, a gr, a great day there, absolutely. Uh, it was a beautiful, beautiful weather, but it was wonderful to see that. And there is such a great synergy and partnership between the district and those children, and those families are going to have, uh, so much more opportunity, uh, moving forward. It's great. Um, I don't see any other lights, uh, indicating trustee reports. Uh, there is, uh, one thing that I would like to say, uh, one item that was not mentioned. Uh, myself and Mrs. Mays and Ms. Walton had the, the honor and the privilege, uh, to attend a very special graduation ceremony for our, uh, senior team and superintendent, uh, for Holdsworth, uh, leadership. Uh, they've, they completed two years of, as the, one of seven districts in the first cohort, uh, ever, uh, for Holdsworth. And, uh, if I may, I would like to ask those that are part of that graduation to please stand right now, please, and be recognized. I don't think they're listening back there.
Holdsworth graduates.
Holdsworth graduates, please stand. There we go. There we go. I, I, the, uh, the, the impact that, and, uh, footprint that is leaving in our district is, is a huge ripple effect. Uh, so thank you very much. It was really nice to be down there and, and, uh, witness that. So I wanted to share that with everybody. Uh, so with that said, uh, Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, sir, President Reich.
All right. Thank you very much. And it is now nine-thirty, and we will move to a closed meeting pursuant to Sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, or five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two through five-five-one-point-zero-eight-four of the Texas Government Code for the purposes stated at the front of the agenda. Thank you.